Do you want to sign this?
Want to welcome everybody to the Carteret County Board of Commissioners meeting, June 3rd. I'd like to ask Commissioner Wheatley to lead us in the pledge.
It'll be an honor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Commissioner Quinn is going to provide our indication tonight.
Heavenly Father, we gather here today to serve the residents of Carteret County. We ask for your wisdom to guide us commissioners as we make decisions on behalf of our citizens. Grant us fairness, discernment, and a deep sense of compassion for all the people we represent. May we find common ground in the spirit of cooperation and respect. May our discussions be marked by respect and civility, and may our choices reflect your love of justice and peace. We pray for your continued blessings on our county, our state, and our country, Lord. Amen.
Amen. All right. In accordance with the State Government Ethics Act, it is the duty of every board member to avoid both conflicts of interest and appearances of conflict. Does any board member have any known conflict of interest or appearance of conflict with respect to any matter coming before the board this evening? If so, please identify the conflict and refrain from any undue participation in the particular matter involved. You good? All good? And I'd like to ask everybody to silence or shut your personal devices off. And here we go. Like to ask for an adoption of the agenda. Got a first and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. The consent agenda. Got a first and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All right. And public, public comments, or are we going to do that for?
Next month.
Next, next. Dale Gilliken is here to speak about the.
Chairman, you had to call for a motion to go into public hearing. Usually, we start with some comments about the previous month's meetings, budget presentation.
Okay. Is it about the budget presentation, or?
Correct.
Okay, so when we go into public hearing. Just wanted to make sure I wasn't skipping you. All right. And item number five, public hearing on the fiscal year 2004, 2005 county government budget.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to go into public hearing.
All right. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. We're now in public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in reference to the county government budget?
Dale wants to speak up, right?
Dale is the only one? All right. Dale, you can come on up. We're not going to time you tonight, but.
I'll speak for him if that's the one. So, good evening, commissioners. My name's Dale Gilliken, and I'm a Board of Elections board member for Carteret County. And I was encouraged by fellow board members to come and speak tonight regarding our upcoming budget. So, our board was recently informed that the Board of Elections salary increases that the board recommended were not recommended by county personnel for your approval. Our Board of Elections Department have critical positions. Elections must be held, they must be secure, they must be 100% compliant, or there are legal repercussions of misdemeanors and felonies, as we're all aware. Our Board of Elections Director has legal, statutory, and fiscal responsibility, as well as accountability to uphold the law. Our director is knowledgeable of the North Carolina general statutes that change on a dime and require a lot of short, fused action. And with this type of responsibility, it's difficult to justify that our Board of Elections Director is the third lowest-paid department head in this county. They interface regularly with public, state boards of elections, other counties, news media, county IT, human resources, safety officers, public buildings department, and finance, just to name a few. Security of elections and our voting sites is imperative, and this includes delivery and inventory of our equipment. Board of Elections validates and verifies all election and voter history for data integrity. Our director's salary compared to other counties. Stanley County has less than 5,000 citizens than what Carteret does, and they make over $5,000 more a year. Chatham County has over 7,000 more citizens than Carteret, and they make over $12,000 a year more. Our director supervises over 200 employees. Elections must be transparent with 100% visibility, especially with all the public scrutiny that we're under in the election integrity groups. We're under a microscope. The director deals with public relations daily, newspapers, TV, radio, Freedom of Information Act request, data requests, anything from public to state board of elections. Our director is the face of Carteret County, and they tell our story and speak so that voters understand how their votes count and how to secure elections without getting hacked. Salary is key to retention of personnel and continuity to minimize turnover. I hope each of you understand the criticality of this department and will inquire on reconsideration of why the Board of Elections salary increases were not in the recommended budget. Thank you.
Chairman, you asked a question, please.
Yes, sir.
When you were going through stating which county received more money. You said one county got $12,000 more. Is that?
Chatham, Chatham County.
Was that per employee or total?
That was just the director position.
Yes, the director's position.
Correct. Yes. We have four full-time employees, we have two election assistants, we have a deputy director, and we have a director.
So, all the salary increases you thought only pertaining to the director?
No, they actually include to all the staff. Again, because as you're aware, several years ago, we had to replace all of our positions.
Just to clear it up for me, that was a total.
$12,000 a year salary higher.
Just for the director.
How many, how many years is, if you're comparing years of service?
So, our director's been with us since 2017, so they've been there seven years. And they have had, we hired them with a master's degree in what they currently have.
Okay, but how's that compare versus the Chatham and the Stanley?
Now, I was not privy to that information as far as their years of duration, as far as their tenure or either.
Isn't that kind of significant in making those types of decisions?
It should be on a recruitment act.
I mean, I'm looking at your numbers right now, and I mean, other than the four-year election cycles, you're receiving more money than, as much money as you've ever received. I mean, so you're getting more money every year. What are y'all doing with the money if it's not going to the employees?
So, obviously, there's line items within that budget, and all cost of doing business has gone up. This year, we had a second primary that we didn't have planned for in our budget, so we had to hit our emergency fund. And like I said, elections have to be held. There's no way.
Let me ask you this. Y'all opened, and I'm not picking, but I mean, I'm just trying to make sure we're throwing numbers and facts out there. I want to make sure. You opened up an additional early voting place this past election during the primary, and it couldn't have got more than 500 votes total at that early election site, and we staffed it with six people a day. Is that, I mean, in my business, I wouldn't operate that way. Is that something we're going to continue to do in the future? Operating that early voting facility, or? I mean, I know we want people to vote early, but I look at cost per voter, too.
Right. Absolutely, absolutely. And as a taxpayer, I'm very concerned. As a presidential election year, we were anticipating a higher voter turnout. And four years ago, that's exactly what we did. We had four early voting sites opened up, and we were highly disappointed with the voter turnout for that first primary at that fourth election site.
Whether it didn't help you either.
Correct. But again, everything that we do is to make things as easily accessible for the voters. So whether it's absentee by mail, whether it's early voting, or election day, that they have their opportunity to voice their vote.
I think another point is that extra early voting place was in the 3rd district, which was a competitive race in this primary, and none of the other polling places were in the 3rd district.
Correct. Normally, we have three early voting sites, Beaufort in Board of Elections office. We have Western Park in Newport, which is kind of a central part of the county. And then we also have Western Park down at Cape Carter at Cedar Point area, that parks and wreck building.
You opened up a polling place in the 3rd district, unfortunately.
I saw it was voter 500 and something, and I was at the end of the last vote, and I'm like, does that make sense?
Who can ever forecast how many voters are going to come out? I was highly disappointed in the second primary turnout, but we only have one side open. We try to minimize things as best possible. We are required by state law to have at least three people per site. We also use the voter population in those precincts wherever these early voting sites are, which is why the Morehead one was also opened.
What is, what is your estimated cost on having to have a second primary?
Well, I know what it costs to rent those rider trucks, those rental trucks, to deliver, because on election day, you have all 26 precincts open. During that early voting period, it's up to the county board as to what they open, and we go based on history, historical data, and as far as the staff recommendation. I know the trucks alone are over $12,000. So, it costs a lot to have elections, but there's nothing we can do away to get away with them.
I got a question, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Dale. You do a good job for us over there. Is the salary increase you're asking for, is that?
Where the hell is that?
In the
Page 17.
Part-time folks, you know, I think last year they came where they were getting nine, 10 bucks a hour, and they wanted to get them to 13 or something.
That's correct. So, last year, we did get a, I think it was a $2 an hour increase for all the part-time workers, because we're having a tough time recruiting personnel. So, if you've got friends, family who want to come out and vote or help with the voting process, have them call Board of Elections. But this request this year was only based on their performance. Everything was performance-based for the staff only, the four positions.
That's what you're asking for. Now, do we have control over how many days of early voting we have, or is that a state function?
It's a state mandate.
So, we can't cut back without the state cutting back?
Do you have a number you want to throw at us?
They were all different, because again, there's four different personnel in the office. But I know that, I believe it was 3% or less for all four of them. I don't have that number at my availability, but I can get it.
If you can get that to Lori, okay. That way, we'll know.
I'll get you the actual percentage and the amounts that were recommended.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, is there anyone else to speak on the government budget? Make a motion to go out of public hearing.
I should have go out of public hearing.
Second.
Got a first and a second. All those in favor going out of public hearing, raise your right hand. All right, we're now out of public hearing. Item number six is the Fire and EMS Commission budget presentation by Mark Schaus.
Mr. Chairman, you want me to go through each one of them, or just the ones that have changed, or how do you want to handle it?
What do you think, Mark? What's your, what's your preference?
It doesn't make a difference to me. I mean, there's, this year. Yeah, this year, the only two departments the tax rates changed on, or our recommendation is to change them. The rest of them, you know, stayed exactly the same. They've done, all of them have done a good job of maintaining their budget and, you know, kind of tightening purse strings or whatever in anticipation of the revaluation coming, you know. And so, that'll make a big difference in several of the districts in particular.
So. Let's just talk about the two, then.
The two is, the first one is Newport's Rescue District. There was a, they requested a 2 cent tax rate increase from 2 cents to 4 cents, and the maximum they can receive, I think, is 5 cents. Is that right?
Correct.
Mr. Shin, anyway, and so we recommended that that increase take place for Newport. Their fire tax is currently 10 cents, and it's maxed out, so it can't change. So, and the only other change was on South River's Fire District. The EMS tax is set by the county. That's different. They are in the process of needing some, some equipment to be replaced. They initially, they, we were talking about moving them from 6 cents to 7 cents, and the 1 cent being held by the county until their grant was approved or not approved. But the, we just think the best thing to do is just go ahead and let them hold, you know, the funds be distributed to them, and then in hopes that their grant will be approved, because they were going to use it for the matching funds for the grant. And that's, those were the only changes to any of the tax rates, just those two. There were no, you know, recommended reductions in taxes. So, I'll answer any questions anybody has.
All right. Is there any questions for Mr. Schaus?
I got a question. The other day or last month, we give 2 cent to Newport. Is this an additional 2 cent?
It's the same.
So, it's the same 2 cent?
Yep. Is it changing the contract?
Yeah, the contracts, the, we, the county has contracts with
And that expired this year.
Newport, Beaufort, Morehead, and Indian Beach, and all those were signed, correct? So, they've all been executed.
I just, go ahead.
I was just like, Mr. Schaus, with that 1 cent increase in South River, what would that bring the rate to?
It'd bring it to 7 cents. And keep in mind that their district is like some of the ones down east. It doesn't generate much on you. It's less than $15,000 that one penny generates, so it's not a lot of money.
I just want to thank you. I've been up here for, I guess, 11 years, 11 and some years, and you've been here the whole time. And I want to thank you. I know it's a hard job to, to do what you do, and you also serve on the hospital board. We, I just want to tell you thank you.
Well, I appreciate that, and we, we feel like we've made a difference with the Fire and EMS. It's gotten easier every year. The departments have, it was a learning curve in the beginning, and I was already supposed to have turned off of the Fire and EMS Commission, but thanks to Mr. Mansfield, I guess I'm pegged for life.
No good deed goes unpunished.
There you go.
The loser loves company.
Appreciate all you do. And if you'll please, also, please tell the commission that we appreciate it. I mean, you're, you're, I mean, it, it's kind of hard to, to, for us seven to understand exactly what's going on, and you're that, that wall between us that keeps everybody going in the right direction. I know, I know on both sides, we get stuff back and forth. Last year, we had some stuff in the West and things like that, but it's just nice to know that we've got somebody that is an extra ear or an eye that's keeping an eye on that stuff, and it should be very important to us commissioners.
I'll give a lot of credit to emergency management, Stephen and his group, because they, they help us a lot with, you know, getting the information, collecting it. Kelly Woodruff with the Finance Department, it would be very difficult to do it without her, too, so.
Thank you.
A lot of people involved.
We appreciate it. All right. And then item number seven is the presentation of the Carteret County Public Schools 2024, 2025 budget request. Richie, Mr. Richie Panner.
Good evening, and thank you for having us tonight. I also am joined by Ms. Julie Bernatski. She's our new finance officer, so she'll be presenting part of this, this evening. So, to begin, we will talk about some accomplishments of the school system through, so through local support and county funding. Carteret County Public Schools continue to have no low-performing schools in our district. It was something we're proud of. We're ranked fifth in NC schools systems for the career and college readiness proficiency based on some of the test scores. We're ranked sixth when it comes to the grade level proficiency. We're third in all of North Carolina high schools for the ACT scores, and we're first in the ACT work keys, career and college readiness measures. So, I'm proud of those accomplishments. Also, this year, for the third consecutive year, our school, all of our schools received what's called the Purple Star Award, which means that we're, we meet certain criteria where every school is military-friendly for the military families. Every school received that designation, which means that our school system received the Purple Star Distinction Award. So, things we're very proud of. Next, we'll talk about career and college readiness. So, when the mass early college high school closed, we were tasked with making sure that all of our students could have easily access to our college classes. At CCC, we have a great partnership with our community college. This past year, we had 559 students take classes in the fall, and 593 classes were taken in the spring. Someone asked, how many students was that? So, that was 379 students in the fall and 358 students in the spring. So, we have a lot of students taking those classes, and those classes, kids are earning college credits, so that families are able to save thousands of dollars by kids going to the community college while they're duly enrolled in our schools. Also, our high school students, we have a robust CTE program. So, our college, or our high school students earned over 2,000 industry certifications. So, those are things, we talked about this at the Mark Seminar, so those are things like OSHA and ServeSafe, CPR, hunter safety. So, over 2,000 so far. The school year is not over. It's close to over, but we'll add to that number by the end of the year. We continue to have internships with many of our local businesses. This past year, we had 164 internships with 97 businesses in Carteret County. So, those kids aren't going and work. Some of these might be paid, some might be unpaid, but they earn experience where they're able to see what they like, what they might not like, through career exploration, and at the same time, they're able to earn high school credit. We continue to expand our CATE program. We've talked with you about this before. So, this is the program that we started about a year and a half ago, where we partner with businesses. We meet with businesses before we actually partner with them to make sure they offer what, what our students need. And then our students go through an application process, the hiring process. They're interviewed, and they're actually selected to work in these businesses. All of these students are paid. They work at least 120 hours in the business. Many of them work a lot more than that. But, but they're paid, gain the experience, and we've had a lot of success stories. Kids have found out that there's jobs here in Carteret County that they didn't even know existed. So, that's been a huge success. This past year, we, we had 27 interns during the school year. We'll have 12 more this summer. We just added several businesses, Beaufort Hotel, Beaufort Wine and Food, Parker Offshore, the town of Beaufort. We began with the hospital, and, and we continue to be great partners with them. So, this has been a great program for kids to discover. Watch right here in Carteret County for them to have access to. So, we're going to talk about some budget considerations. Some of this you've seen from the Mark Seminar. So, the first slide we'll just show is about our fund balance. So, this slide just shows that during COVID, the 20, the 1920 and 21, or 2021 school years, we were able to add a significant amount of money to our fund balance due to the savings of, of school not being in, essentially. So, we were able to save on substitutes and buses and other local money that we were able to save and put into fund balance. We were, we, we used a significant amount of that in the 21, 22 year, a little over 1.6 million to balance the budget. And then we would use a little over a million in 22, 23, and then this year, we expect to use around 1.1 million to help balance the budget. So, we're predicting our, our fund balance is going to be down significantly at the end of this year.
Hold on, can you, let me interrupt, but if I don't ask you now, I'm going to forget to ask you. Can you go back? So, these numbers we have in front of us, the additional $3 million, in addition to the $3 million you're requesting, you've got plugged in there to spend 1.1 million on top of that, too? So, your budget's going to have increased by over 4 million for the year?
That, that's this year that we're talking about, so.
Oh, you're talking, so you're talking 2024, not 2025?
Right. So, that's 23, 24. Yes, sir.
Okay. That's my oldest clarification. Thank you.
Yes, sir. This next slide, this was a slide that was, it wasn't presented just like this, but these numbers came from a slide that Mr. Burns presented at the last, at the budget meeting that shows the increase, how much we've asked in increasing over the past years. His slide went to the year 2025, which would be the end of this year, but we just backed it up to the last closed-out fiscal year, which would be the June 30th of last year of 2023. And the increase here, it shows that we're at 5.59 million if you start at the 20.82 and go to 26.41. So, over these years, we've asked for 5.5 million dollars more. Ms. Bernatski was at that meeting with me, and we talked on the way out about looking at specific line items in our budget to try to track how much we had spent, or how much the increase was from 2016 back to June 30th of last year. So, this next slide, or some, some hard numbers that we were able to pull and look at. So, the supplement itself, so we increased the supplement by 2% a couple of years ago. Through that and through salary increases, so when the salary increases, the supplement is a percentage of the salary, so it's going to increase also. Then we added 2%. So, from 2016 to 2023, it's over a million and a half, almost 1.6 million dollars we're paying more to our employees.
And when was the supplement increase? What year was that?
I think 2021.
Two, two years ago.
Okay.
So, just the supplement, we're paying over a million and a half more, and then.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry. And then the supplement was in 2021, and then the hourly salary increase has nothing to do with the supplement? The supplement is all the supplement.
It's just the supplement.
That was two years ago, too.
You're right. It was. And so, then the hourly, so the, the second line, almost 700,000, that's when the state came in and says that you have to pay your employees a minimum $15 an hour. So, that's costing us about 700,000. Certified salary increase. So, when the state gives a raise to teachers, we have to give a raise to the locally paid teachers. We can't say, you're locally paid, you're not going to get a raise, so that's a little over 1.1 million.
Just the local?
Yes, sir. Substitutes, over $150,000 more. Substitutes, over $150,000 more. And, and you can read the rest. So, the health insurance, 40,000 more. Contracted services, over $900,000 more. And if you're curious why that is, the majority of that is our cleaning services. Maintenance has increased. Utilities have increased. Transportation.
I'm sorry, I, I want to make sure.
Yes, sir.
So, almost a million dollars in contracting services, and is that, is, was that a lot due to COVID because of the, because?
Well, that's mainly because of, in our, in the contracted services or a cleaning, they get a, a cost of living increase every year, but we've also added more square footage of buildings, and they've, and as our, as our own custodial staff have retired in the contract, they replace them. So, they, they have more services, they're covering more buildings and more schools, but we also have added square footage of buildings.
Okay. Sorry to keep.
No, you, ask all you want. I want to make sure we understand.
Well, we're not paying health insurance and retirement on those employees because we're subbing it out to the.
Right.
So, there's some savings there.
Right, and the last analysis that.
There, there's no savings there.
Well, the.
They're starting out as a savings there, but there's no savings there.
Probably it gets eaten away, but.
And, but we don't have to worry about workers' comp and, and other issues too, so.
Managing employees, but it's, they've.
They figure it in.
Gone up significantly on the contracts and contracts since the beginning.
Yes, sir. And the transportation insurance, and then the charter school pass-through has increased almost $90,000. So, there's 5.7 million dollars accounted for in increases from 2016 to 2023, which helps explain why we keep asking for more because it's taking more to do business.
The only way charter schools' money increases is they get more children, correct?
That is one way. I, I don't know if the rate has increased.
The, the calculation has changed. Did last year, did the calculation change into how we have to reimburse these charter schools for each one of their students? So, yes, as our population grows, the amount will be paid. Charter school's going to go up, but with the calculation change, it's severely impacted our bottom line.
What is the difference between, I mean, do they give you the increase in ADM? If they're going to give them an increase in the child, shouldn't the ADM go up too?
I'm not sure.
The state pays, how many, how much per child? I mean, you're getting funded based upon the average daily membership. So, I mean, there's a, there's a, there's a number associated with that membership, and if you get more children, you get funded greater. If you have less children.
Right.
You get funded less. If, if they're giving the charter schools money, more money, did they give us more money?
So, I, I don't know that I know the answer to that question, but here's one point about the charter schools, is that recently, they changed the rule too, where we have to include, so the virtual charter school, the virtual public charter school, that rule just changed to where those kids are, are funded also. So, I know that added a chunk to our budget. As far as, I, I'm not sure I follow your question, Mr. Mansfield.
Just the funding. I mean, if the charter schools got more money, I want to know why.
And, and I mean, if.
Because they have more kids now.
Yeah.
Well, that was, that was my question. Did they, did they get more, did they have more children?
So, the, the virtual school, they got more kids.
But it was the virtual school, not the Tiller's?
Right.
Because I mean.
But it's also, we have kids that go to Arapahoe Charter School that we have to pay. There's, it's not just.
The money follows the child.
Right.
So, money comes from the state, and then that same amount of money goes out the door?
It flows through us to the charter.
And it's just a, I'm asking.
But, but.
The money follows the child.
It follows the child, but the main thing is, is it flows through. It, it's like it shouldn't really even be in your budget. It should be separated, because it really doesn't. You're not touching those kids.
Right, it's just that we have, like, so, but when we, but when we say that we have to pay them $690,000, it's not like we can pay them less than that.
I understand. And, and I'm asking, I'm, I'm asking that question. I wasn't telling that question. I wanted to make sure.
Right, yes, and so, but, but whatever, whatever it is, we have to pay that amount, no matter how we're funded.
And now a kid can be an online student in their own, what was it, termies?
In their own virtual charter school, yes. So, they take classes online from the state, from a state charter school.
And how many people we got doing that?
I have no idea.
About 60.
60 people?
60 on the virtual. That's the question we asked it for. We weren't sure about the answer on that. And I, I have a question while we're at, while we're on that subject. How many kids, you just, you just showed that in the spring and the fall, there's 563 and 593 kids doing dual enrollment. All right, so, so those kids that are doing dual, dual enrollment, I, I don't know the answer to this. I'm asking. They're, they're, they're going through, they're going to the college for all day, or are they going for a, a couple of hours?
It could be, they could be taking one class, they could be taking two classes.
Okay. And, and the college is getting, you're getting an ADM on them.
It's not called ADM.
Or they, well, it's not called ADM.
FTE.
FTE, you're getting that, and then you, you guys get nothing, but you have less kids at your schools. But, but I, I'm just saying, it's a number. I'm just asking.
They're getting ADM.
Yeah, we're getting.
I understand. They're getting ADM, but she's.
Getting FTEs.
But they're both here. I'm asking the question. I just, you know, that, that is, that's, that's happening. I mean, things are changing. So, there's less kids being taught in the, again, it's a question, less be, less kids being taught by teachers at the, at the high schools and the elementary schools and everything else, because they're over at the college.
At high schools, yes, sir. And there's only high school students that go there, mainly 11th and 12th graders.
Mainly 11th and 12th.
Yes, sir.
You can say, some of them, some of them sit in the classroom at the high school and take the class online.
Why is some of them in periods?
Right, yes. Some of them are, are.
After regular school hours?
After regular school day.
Right.
So, to follow up for Julie, so that was 60 of them that now are online, the online charter school, the online virtual. That's where a majority of that increase is coming from? That's what I was asking with the question about enrollment for Tiller's?
Yes, they are treated as a charter. One day it was $79 a student, and now it's changed. Yeah, so we used to have to pay $79 per student that was enrolled in charter school, but that calculation has changed, and it is a larger amount now per student.
So, I guess.
We can find out.
I'm not trying to get that detail. I'm trying to be simple, so let me try and make my, make my question simpler, because I don't think I'm asking it correctly. A majority of that increase for charter schools had to do with the virtual public school versus the Tiller's School enrollment not growing?
Yes.
Okay, so that, that was all after we began with. Okay, thanks.
Do we know how many go to the Arapahoe Charter School?
Just very few.
One?
One, very few.
And then we have the Tiller's School. Do we have any other charter schools in the county, or does that people go to?
Arts and art, law, leave arts, and housing arts, and these are all.
They live here and they go to that school, or is it virtual?
What happens when they go to the school Math and Science? Just curious. That doesn't have anything to do with the budget.
I'm assuming that they get the ADM, but I, I don't know the answer to that.
But they're from here.
Or they're going to school there.
The money follows the child. How come it doesn't work that way there? I love that, or just forget I said that.
You want me to find out?
No, no.
I don't know off the top of my head.
That's just, that was typical of the state. It works good for them to keep the money, but the other way, you got paid.
That's not surprising, is it?
No.
Any more questions on this slide about the increase in costs from 2016 to 2023? Just answer some of the questions that we, is out there. Now, let's talk about the budget requests. So, first, we'll talk about the capital budget. This year, we're requesting $3,216,224. The, the main categories there are painting for 887,185, and that would be for East Carter at Bog Sound Elementary and Maintenance. We have flooring, and that's would be carpet tiles mostly in our media centers and office areas, and that would be Newport Middle, Bog Sound Elementary, Newport, and Bridges. Technology, actually, I skipped over, so there's repairs and renovations at our schools, the furniture and equipment that's referred to as BNG money for our schools. Our technology, that would be license agreements, about half of that, and then the other half is we want to have a three-year plan of replacing older televisions and projectors in our classrooms, and this would be year one of three. And then finally, we have vehicles and buses. That would be one school bus for our Carter Preschool Center, and so we have to buy that. The state does not provide a bus for preschool. We have to locally own those buses, and, and their, their buses are in poor shape, to say the least. It'd be two activity buses, one truck for maintenance, and one cube box truck. So, that's what those, that money's for in the capital. So, any questions on capital? All right. Next, we're going to talk about operating. I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Bernatski.
So, this slide here shows the actual revenue that we received from the county in 23, 24, 27,000,630,000. Our 24, 25 budget request, the total is 31,000, or 31,48,454, and that is a change in 3.4 million. And we will go through some slides to break down that increase of 3.4 million, so you can see exactly where this is all going. So, there's a few things that go into this 3.4 million. The first is the largest, the increase in expenditures, and that's two, almost 2.9 million, and we will further break that down in just a second. There was the, this line here, 23, 24 budget deficit. The budget in 2024 was greater than the actual amount received by 942,527. This is, you know, like where our fund balance would have come into play to make us have, make ends meet at the end of the year. And then we have some other revenue sources, sales tax refund, tuition, fines, forfeitures, interest earned. So, you can take, take out that 420,000. So, the 2.9 plus the 942, less the 420, is the 3.4 that we're talking about.
So, just to be clear.
Yeah.
That 942, 527, and you had, it was last year's, but you have 1.1 left in, in your, did you have, how much did you have left in, in your?
No, we're projecting we're going to be spending about 1.1.
1.1, okay.
So, yeah, and that slide, we'll, we'll have less than a million in fund balance, if that projection comes to fruition.
Why, why, what was the reason for the budget deficit? I mean, was there anything, any particular thing?
So, you know, I'm, I'm new in this position, and I'll say, I, I came in here and kind of wanted to get a historical background of everything that's happened with this budget, and I went back to about 2016, was looking at the funding patterns, and it looked like each year, we asked for this much, we got this much, and we spent this much. So.
That's a very good answer.
So, I think what's happening is that, you know, we ask here, we're receiving here, and I think there's been a push over the years to keep our fund balance low. So, anytime we see that, hey, there might be fund balance, which is going to happen, because, you know, as the year goes on, I have state funds to maximize, I have federal funds to maximize, I am pushing people from my local budget over to those budgets. If I have lapsed salaries, if I have a contract that doesn't go through that used to go through, if I have a change in software that's now $10,000 cheaper, I'm going to be moving what I can from our local expenditures over to our state and federal expenditures. So, when I do that, what's going to happen in the local budget is I'm going to end up looking like I'm going to have fund balance. Now, that's not to say that we're just finding things to just spend our money on, but, you know, if there are things that got pushed by the wayside for years and years, we say, hey, we actually are in a situation where our fund balance might grow. We know that our county commissioners don't want us to have, you know, a huge fund balance, so let's go ahead and spend that, so that we can keep that at a reasonable level. So, we're funded here, what we request here, we're funded here, we spend here. But the problem is that, you know, year over year over year of this happening, it kind of comes to a point where we run out of fund balance, and that's kind of where we are here. So, yeah, that's that 942.
Thank you.
So, the, I'll say real quick, the, the 2.8 is made up of, of three things, which we'll get to in just a couple of slides, but one of these things, Mr. Paylor will.
Right. So, the next two slides, we, we talked about this slide back in March, which was the sixth, what we call critical teaching position. So, there were three high school social studies positions that, right now, this past year was funded through ESR money. ESR money is going away. That was a social studies teacher at West Heart, one at Creighton, and one at Bridges. We also have one and a half EL teachers, that's English learners. So, that's our students that come to our county that speak very limited English, and these are teachers that specialize in helping them learn English. That is actually, we have more than 300 kids right now in that program, and that is by far our fastest-growing population. So, these teachers are needed to help those kids transition and, and learn to speak English. We also have one and a half EC teachers, or that's exceptional children, what back in the day we called special ed. We, we, we feel that these six positions are critical in keeping the level of service that we have had, and feel that they're, they're much needed, and that's about $477,000 we feel like we need. There's also some new items that we feel are needed. First, our, our athletic trainers, and many of you probably heard about this last fall, we had a very good relationship with Moore Orthopedic, and, and they served our schools for years, free of charge to us, and, and provided an excellent service, and through no fault of their own, it's just the personnel changes, they were not able to keep up that service. This past year, we have, the best way I can say is kind of piecemeal. Every high school has done a little bit of something different, just to make sure. There are certain regulations that the North Carolina High School Athletic Association requires us. There's a lot more protocols now than there were even 10 years ago, and this is just to provide a service to kids, to, to keep them safe on athletic fields. So, we feel like that's a need. That would cover all three high schools. We also have a need to fund an assistant facility support director. We've talked about that. Kenny is, Kenny's here, and Kenny does a wonderful job. If Kenny, Kenny left, we would, we would be in a mess. So, we feel a need to, to fund that assistant director, someone that can learn the ropes before he decides to retire. Creighton High School is in need of an assistant principal. Right now, they're basically the same size as West Heart High School with one fewer assistant principal, and they have two assistant principals there for a little over 1,000 kids. So, we feel like that's a need. And, and the last one on this page is behavior support classroom, and, and this is, this would be for an elementary level. So, our elementary, right now, we don't have a Bridges School, an alternative school for elementary kids, and so when, there, there's a great need, and, and you hear this, I'm sure, probably at every month, about the mental health and the mental wellness of our, of our population, well, that starts in elementary school. And so, we have kids that probably, not probably, they, they do need an alternate placement, and right now, we don't have that. So, schools are having to deal with those kids, and, and that classroom would need one teacher and two teacher assistants. And so, all that combined would be 519, little over 519,000, almost 520. And so, the last slide, talking about the six teachers, and this slide, talking about the new needs. Ms. Bernatski's going to talk about here on this, which would be the, the yellow column.
Yeah, so this is, this is a breakdown of that 2.8 or 2.9 that we talked about in expenditures. So, if you start on the right-hand side, the yellow column, those are the new items that Mr. Paylor just went over, the 477 plus the 519, that's 997 there at the bottom. The green column is a, is what I call like a regular increase, and that is if I took our budget and was able to do a 3% raise on salaries, 2% raise on our custodian contract, a 4% raise maybe on transportation insurance, maintenance, utilities, you know, just a, like a regular expected increase for the year. However, we also have this kind of bluish-purple column in the middle, and that's what I'm going to call our adjustments. These, you know, in, in years past, it, it became apparent as I, as I dove into this budget deeply, that it seemed that our budget had been built off of the previous year's budget year over year, without ever really going in and realigning our expenditures with the budget. So, I would call these items kind of missed items in the budget, where either an inadequate amount was budgeted, or no amount was budgeted at all, but yet we were spending year over year. So, these adjustment items are to kind of true up our budget to what we're actually spending. There are a couple of negatives in this column as well, and that's just where we sat down at a table and tried to figure out where could we possibly save some money. So, we have cut a few things there, which is what led to the negative numbers. But the 914, the 983 in adjustments, the 997 in new items, all add up to that 2.895 million in increases in expenditures. This here is a pie chart of the full budget for, for our request, and as you can see, 50% of our budget is salaries and benefits. These are people, and this is all our local budget. This is our fund too, so salaries and benefits are 50%. Then, the next largest section is our supplements with the benefits also attached. That's about $4 million, 13% of our budget. Then the next, um, largest section is our supplements with the benefits also attached, that's about four million dollars, thirteen percent of our budget. Next is utilities at three point eight million. This includes telephone, electric, natural gas, water, sewer, heating, fuel, waste management, shredding. I mean, it's everything that we have to have to function on a normal basis. The next one, the orange one, is custodial contracted services, this is two point six million. Then we have maintenance, these would be supplies, repair parts, and contracted repairs that, um, that we need to outsource. This is one point seven million, six percent of our budget. Then supplies and equipment is next at just under a million at three percent, and these supplies will, um, be for office, classroom, IT, nurses, library band, testing. Then we've got charter schools at two percent of our budget, just under seven hundred thousand. We have insurance at just over six hundred thousand, another two percent. And our insurance is unemployment, student accident, errors and omissions, vehicle liability, property insurance. Then we have contracted services at four hundred and seventy-seven thousand, and this would include things like athletic trainers, game officials, athletic security, nurses for five oh four students, interpreters, employee assistant programs, background checks, legal fees, audit fees. And then transportation is four hundred and sixty-seven thousand, which will cover gas and diesel, Department of Transportation physicals, uh, activity bus costs, and then staff development of two hundred and sixty thousand, which would be our staff development and allowable travel, um, not just for staff development, but also all of our itinerant employees that have to travel from school to school on a daily basis.
So, bottom line, we're asking for, for three point two million for capital and a little over thirty-one million for operating. We do appreciate your support, and we know that we're, we're a top-tier system for, because of our local support. And, and last, I would offer, uh, we'll be glad to sit down and go over, um, line item by line item, the budget. If anyone has questions, we'll make sure that everyone understands and, and knows, um, the, the needs that we have, and, um, we'll be glad to, to sit down and, and discuss that.
On your capital budget increase, you showed the, the numbers, you don't show what, what's the increase from last year?
I would say that, I, I don't have that number with me, um, but I would say the, the request is probably very similar to what it was last year.
I don't, I don't have a request number, but I know that we were funded-
Can we run something?
Two million, and then we earned two hundred and ten thousand for our operating, so it was one point eight nine million that we had to use this year.
You said what number before that?
So we were funded at two million, we moved two hundred and ten thousand from our capital to our operating.
I was thinking it was two thirty, but that's probably right.
So, uh, we had one point eight nine million.
It's a two ten.
But the, the request was probably very similar.
Our request is almost always over three million.
Is there anything in here you can do without, uh, some walking trails and different stuff I saw on one?
We don't have any walking trails in next year's budget. We, we bumped it-
Pushed all those out.
They're, they're asked for yearly, but we, we bumped them out for years. As a matter of fact, I don't think that we've ever funded one, it's just that-
But are they in that number?
No.
They're not in that?
No.
During the course of the year, we shifted money out of your capital account. It was gonna be used to paint some buildings, and it was shifted over into operating because you wanted to retain-
Just three teachers, yeah.
Three teachers. Did you in fact do that, did you retain the three teachers?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, they're still employed and they're included in the operating budget for what you're requesting this year? And which positions were they filling?
I don't know that I can answer that question, because when they, when we sat, well, I can answer, one of them was, uh, was a, a math teacher at, I, I don't remember the three off the top of my head, but it was, it was three positions we were gonna have to cut that were saved, and I can't remember the exact positions.
The money was originally funded by ESRA's money, wasn't it? Federal money?
No, sir. No, that, that, those positions, the six positions that I've talked about tonight are the ESRA's positions that we are trying to save. Uh, we're also cutting about fifty, I don't know the exact number, we're, we're cutting about fifty positions, um, after June thirtieth that, that were ESRA-funded, that we have had for the past three years.
Did you say fifteen?
Fifty.
Five zero?
Five zero, yes, sir.
Which positions are those?
Yes, um, a, a bunch, uh, many, uh, nurses, um, there'll be several teacher assistants, um, some teachers, yeah, technology coaches, um, instructional coaches. The ESRA's money, uh, those, the, the people when we hired for, uh, for ESRA funding, it had to be to try to help with learning loss recovery, so, and, and the effects of COVID. So that's where the nurses came in, and, but the, the coaches and, and a lot of the teacher assistants were, were employed to try to help students get back, bounce back from, uh, missing school during COVID.
Richie, what, what exactly is ESRA money? What, what, what is that term, ESRA?
It, it, yeah, it's definitely COVID for learning loss.
I didn't know what that acronym was.
I, I knew it at one time, emergency-
Elementary and secondary school emergency work.
There you go.
And, and Richie, um, the, the bond money, uh, where, could you, could you give us just a quick little snapshot of where we are, what we have left, and are we done, or, or where, where we are on the end of that?
So we, um, we're on the end of it. Right now, um, the major projects that have been funded is we funded a, a, uh, addition at Crowletan High School. Um, we're completing an addition at Broad Creek Middle School right now. It'll be done this summer, and kids will occupy that building next year. And we just approved a twenty-two million dollar project at West Heart High School. Well, they're, they're getting a new band room, um, a science wing, um, a major locker room renovation, and cafeteria, uh, improvements, um, and other, uh, major HVAC work there, and a major, there's major electrical work going on there also. So that, that was the twenty-two million. I, I don't have a number, and Tommy, I don't, you might know, um, but, but we're getting toward the end. I would say we got, uh, maybe a couple million left.
Yeah, I mean, we, we just did the final, well, we got the final debt issuance coming up later this month, and that'll be all of the bond debt will be finally-
So that'll be, that'll be it, there's no, there's none left in any that we've spent at all. And when that happens, we'll get about two point, it's gonna cost us about two point two million.
Two point two is the debt service on the, uh, the twenty-two million we're getting ready to issue later this month.
Right, but that's the end of it. That's it, that's-
That's all the bond operation.
Yeah, that's, that's what he spent, so there's, it's done. And we did the other one last year, the other twenty-two million.
The issuance, yeah. Yeah.
What is the payment on the forty-two million total?
Uh, the twenty-two million is about two point, close to two point three million, and then the twenty million is-
It's over four million, I think, combined.
Combined is over four million.
So the, so the first one, we got a better interest rate on, or we wasn't as much money?
No, it was a little bit, it was two million dollars less in principal.
Okay.
And so, um, the interest rates probably be, be about the same on those issuances.
Okay.
Let me, Mr. Paylor, what, why is the ESRA money going away? What is the reason for that?
Um, when the federal government, uh, gave us ESRA money three years ago, it, they, they told us it's for three years, and it, the, the purpose of this money is to help you bounce back from COVID. And so it was just, it was a short time funding.
How about our commercial kitchen, Chief Carter? Are we ready to plug in the oven, or where are we at with that?
So, uh, we are, um, we're getting toward the end of the planning phase, and, uh, we hope that that is done, um, this school year, hopefully, and, hopefully by December. But don't hold me to that. That's our hope.
I'll give you a thirty-day grant period.
Okay. Any more questions?
Any, any more questions?
All right.
All right, thank you. We really appreciate all, answering all the questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Richie.
And welcome, Julie. Item number eight is the presentation of the Carter Community College two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five budget request. Dr. Tracy Mancini.
Good evening, Commissioners, good evening, Manager Burns and staff, and thank you for this opportunity to speak with you tonight and talk about our budget requests this year. Uh, before I, I do that, I wanna thank you, uh, for the recent allocation that you provided for us to proceed with the piping and HVAC renovations in the McGee Building. It's really essential work, and we are so glad to be able to move forward with that because we were having to piece together repairs for long-deferred maintenance on that project. So, uh, we are very appreciative of that. And also to Manager Burns and all of you for allowing us to engage with the county's new value engineer in working with the low bidder on that project, because we believe we'll be able to uncover a lot of additional value and, uh, get more done than we anticipated in the beginning for that same amount of funding that we have to apply to that. So we're really enjoying that process, it's been very educational and productive, and I think the results are going to be really, uh, something, something to show you, uh, when it's all done. So thank you for that. Also want to give you a very quick update on our Workforce Center for Trades and Transportation Technology, which is entirely funded by state allocations. We've, we have nine point three seven five million dollars we've received over the past four years through state funding sources that we can apply to a Workforce Center for Trades and Transportation Technology. We just today received word from the State Board of Community Colleges, uh, with approval to proceed with the Phase One Environmental Assessment on the land that we hope to build that on, on our campus. And so once we have that, we can begin to reparse and rezone the land that we wanna use and move forward. So we hope to be in design phase for that this summer, and hope in fall to be able to, uh, break ground on that Trades and Transportation Center. So we wanted to give you that update because we know that's something important to you. So now I'll turn to our budget request. And I thought that I would begin by just giving you an overview of the college's overall budget, uh, this current year, and what we're estimating for next year. And I know you have a handout, and it may be hard to see some of this, but, uh, right now, this year, we had about seventeen million dollars in state funding for the college, and that began, uh, much lower than that, around fourteen million, but then the, uh, General Assembly allocated a lot of additional categorical money. For example, they gave us additional funds to increase salaries for nurses so that we could, um, pay them at a, a market rate, because a lot of the colleges across the state were having trouble funding nursing physicians. And they gave us money for, uh, high-cost startup programs to hire people to do the curriculum and, uh, get necessary equipment for short-term workforce training programs. And so it all totaled came to about seventeen million dollars, and, uh, the county generously provided about four million dollars. So that, that's about thirteen point seven percent of our total budget this year. And then institutional funds, about seven point five percent of our budget, and, uh, about seven, uh, seven million dollars. That, that amount, uh, uh, I'm sorry, that's seven million dollars, twenty-six percent of our budget. That money is, is, uh, in a lot of ways passed through, it's the money we receive for Pell Grants that we pass through to our students to pay tuition for them. Uh, in addition, it's federal grant funding that we receive for some of our programs, and institutional fees that we receive, um, and, uh, from students. So last year's total budget was twenty-eight, or this year's total budget is twenty-eight, eight seventy, uh, million, and the one that we're anticipating for the coming year, thank you for, um, thank you, Ray, that, for the coming year is twenty-nine million. And so it's really not a large increase. We're hopeful that the state legislature, when they finish the short session, may include a few more of those allocations for pay increases for particular areas, and also some more, um, programs that we're anticipating for, uh, individuals with developmental needs. Uh, we've been tapped to participate in a potential pilot for that, to increase workforce training for students who have disabilities, uh, at the college, and also, um, to, to in, add some new high-cost, uh, startup programs at the college. So we're hopeful that that may, that the state portion of the twenty-four, twenty-five budget may grow a little bit. But you see that we're requesting, uh, in that budget, we are requesting, uh, about four point four million total from the county for our operating costs and capital. And so the operating costs that the, uh, funds, uh, go toward are, are safety, security, campus, uh, operations and facilities maintenance, and so that's what that funding goes to. And we've, we've had a lot of great improvements on campus over the last several years, uh, and we've invited more and more people to campus with the walking trail, living shoreline, hospitality and culinary arts center, Big Rock Career Center, and other programs. And so more and more people are visiting, and we get excellent feedback on the safety and security and appearance of our campus. It's, it's, uh, something we're very proud of, and we're hearing good feedback on. So now I'll move to our specific operating requests for this year, and, uh, it's very much a continuation budget, uh, this year. We're requesting three point four two million, uh, from the county for operating, and that consists of our general institutional administration funds, contracted services, and service agreements for repairs, utilities, and insurance bonding, and it's approximately an eight percent increase there. When we look at, and, and I provided you with an actual summary of some of our year-to-date actuals versus, uh, our budget, and when we look at that, we are sticking really close to the budget we set last year for the county. Uh, we're just, we're over about a half a percent on general institution and administration, and that includes payroll, benefits, performance bonuses, uh, technical training, equipment inspections, taxes, licenses, permits, leases, gasoline, and supplies. And so being only about a half a percent over right now, we feel pretty good about that with inflation, and we believe we'll be able to cover that, as we're a little bit under when we look at our contracted services and agreements, uh, for repairs. That's waste removal, pest control, legal services, landscaping services, fire extinguisher, elevator, and telephone maintenance, HVAC maintenance agreements and repairs. So right now, we're running about one point four percent under that budget, but you can see, those are really close to the line. We're, we're doing an excellent job, I believe, of managing the budget and staying close by. So this, this budget request, uh, utilities, I do want to mention to you, we're, we're asking for a little bit more in utilities. We, we are about five percent over on utilities this year, and that's telecommunications, heat, heating, fuel, water, and electricity. And a lot of that was because of the McGee Building piping accident. When, when we had that catastrophic loss, we had to plug in a lot of space heaters to be able to continue having classes, and, uh, we were running a lot of electricity during that, that several weeks. In consultation with the value engineer, he believes that the repairs that we're about to pursue will significantly decrease our electricity and utilities costs, uh, and, and so hopefully come back into balance there. So, uh, so our request is slightly higher, but mostly based on actuals that we're, uh, watching very closely this year. And then I'll move over to capital requests. And that request is, uh-oh, my three minutes are up. Yeah, that wasn't me.
There was a denial beeper going off.
That's not a bad sign. Uh, our capital request is the same as it was last year, a million dollars capital request. And, um, much of that is, uh, base, is for renovations and improvements on campus. We continue to work the deferred maintenance list. We do have a need to update some spaces to better serve our students. Storm protection and safety and security, slight increases there. We're adding keyless entry to all of our buildings, one, one or two buildings a year. And one of the things we ran into this year was the budget amount didn't quite make it, because in order to add the keypads, uh, the door wasn't, it, it wasn't a, a new enough door. So we had to replace the big doors on the Bryant Student Center in order to be able to use the, um- So we had to replace the big doors on the Bryant Student Center in order to be able to use the, uh, the, the electronic keypads. And so, uh, knowing that, we're asking for a little bit more for the coming year because we know we're going to try to, uh, put the security sys, security doors on McGee Building and Smith Building this year. So there are slight increases there. We have lowered our operations and facilities, um, equipment costs a little because last year we were able to get some equipment that we think is going to carry us through this year. We, we just need less this year, so we've lowered that request. But we're asking for the same amount of capital for the coming year, and, uh, we're, we're working very hard to be good stewards of that money. We appreciate it very much, and I think that we can continue to make great improvements with that on our campus to serve students and our employees and the community.
Any questions? I, I just, I just want to say that it's been pretty amazing what you've done at the college. I mean, you yourself, you don't get enough credit. Your foundation board has been very aggressive, you know, with the culinary school and all. I mean, just what you guys are doing is amazing. I mean, our, our school system is amazing, and our college system is amazing, there's no doubt about that. But you really deserve a lot of credit. You do a great job.
Well, thank you. Thank you so much. It, it truly is a team effort and a partner effort. And I agree with Mr. Paylor that our work with the school system has been so beneficial for all of us. We're glad to be able to serve more students in the community and more families in the community, and it's, it's a true pleasure to be in, in that role. So thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions? All right, and our next.
Thank you.
Our next item is number nine. Uh, anybody want to take a break or anything? You guys want to take a five-minute break, or? Tommy, do you need a break?
No, I'm good.
You want to tell everybody your story of the weekend, or how glad you are to be back at Carter County?
I don't think we have enough time.
All right, we're gonna, gonna move on, or you want to take a five-minute break? Everybody good? All right, we're gonna go to item number nine, continued budget discussion with Tommy Burns and Dee Michal.
Thank you, Commissioners. So at this point, um, at the last meeting, we presented the recommended budget, and then the night you went through and heard, um, some presentations from some of the key stakeholders of this budget. At this point, uh, Dee and I would be happy to go through, uh, any questions on the recommended budget or, um, from the presentations that you've heard this evening and answer any questions. And if there's not any questions, um, we'd be happy to kind of let you know our recommendations as far as how to proceed forward, um, with the budget adoption, um, for this fiscal year. Um, we went over at the last meeting the additional debt service that we're taking on, so that's obviously, um, a new consideration from the prior year. But all in all, we tried to keep this as close as we could to a, a continuation budget or a maintenance budget. Um, and at this point, we have to answer any questions that you may have, um, from those documents or the presentations.
All right. You have any questions for Tommy and Dee?
Or if you're thinking of any tonight, we can answer those, you know, tomorrow, whatever, whatever your position of board is.
I think you just need to plan on us being in your office all week this week, which kind of shows.
That's fine.
All right, and we're gonna move on to, uh, item number ten, Commissioner comments. And, um, I'll start with Mr. Shann.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, first off, I'm gonna apologize to Dr. Mancini for my alarm going off in the middle of your presentation. It's actually Lori's fault because she feeds us before, so, uh, and it's, I can't, I can't turn that alarm off. So everybody's heard it before, so anyway, ongoing thing. Uh, but I appreciate the work and the effort that all the departments, the, uh, Fire and EMS, uh, put together. Richie and your staff, appreciate the presentation. I know we met earlier this week, or last week, I should say, and, uh, good information to take into account in our deliberations. And, and of course, Tracy, your presentation was, appreciate the, the effort and the work that goes into it. So it's a busy season, um, uh, most important decision we make all year round, right, you know, right now. So, um, with that, uh, I'll, I'll pass it on. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Yeah, I just want to, uh, salute all the folks that work so hard to put these budgets together. And we have to go through all of this, and all of this, and this, this pages and after pages after pages of line items and numbers. And it's very, it's comprehensive. It's also hard to comprehend it all in, in sitting down, even with a couple of weeks of looking at it. To try to wrap your head around the whole darn thing is really, really tough. But somehow or another, we managed to muddle through year after year. And, uh, it's really, the budget process and the outcomes, so much credit is deserved by Dee Michal and her, uh, group of cohorts down there that massage all these numbers and, uh, work with Tommy very closely to, to get all this to, to work out right. We've got so much money coming in, and we gotta make sure we don't spend more than what we got, and hopefully we'll put a little bit in the bank for next year or whatever. So, uh, my hats off to, uh, all the folks that have worked on their budgets in their various departments, whether it's the school budget, the Fire and EMS budget, uh, just so many elements in, in the government that people aren't aware of. And I really have nothing else to add to that, just, uh, thank you for a job well done and trying to make our job as easy as possible. I really appreciate it. Next.
Uh, I'd like to thank all of our employees for all the hard work they do, submit the requests to the Finance Department to scrutinize the money, to make sure that we're, uh, doing good on the path of our taxpayers in the county. Obviously, all the staff, the management staff, all the departments do a great job. Thank, our county would not be as good as it is if it were not for all the employees that we have, the hospital, the community college, the school system. As Mr. Paylor mentioned, I mean, our school system ranks as one of the top in the state. When we're talking about budgetary numbers, we also rank in the top ten percent of the size of our budget that funds education in the state. So out of a hundred and ten LEAs, I mean, we rank in the top ten percent of a hundred counties as the amount of money out of our budget we allocate towards education. So I think education has always been important in Carter County, and it shows. The hard part is, is where do you squeeze the dollars from, and where do they come from? And, you know, the federal government, we've been fortunate due to COVID that we're able to help fund a lot of things, but now we've got to figure out the gaps, and that's always the hard part. And we'll have to try to work through it the best we can and, um, be as sensitive to providing services, but also not putting a burden on the taxpayers in the county. Because right now, everywhere you go, everything costs more, and it's a, it's a big problem, so. Tell that.
You ready, Commissioner Weely?
Yes, sir. I want to reiterate, reiterate right what all the other Commissioners say. It's a tough job putting all these numbers together and, and then to present, and then to ask, answer questions from us, and everybody does a great job in county and the, uh, all the different departments. I just want to thank you all. You did a wonderful job, and you explained it very well. And now it's our turn to do our job. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Towitz?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Like everybody said, everything costs more, you know. I think the school system bears the brunt of the scrutiny because it's the biggest piece of the pie. If you look at budgets, our, you know, our Sheriff's Office, probably back in two thousand nineteen, was around ten million. Now it's sixteen million. Or, or, uh, Health and Human Services, or, uh, Health Department, you know, e- everything costs more. And, uh, certainly I want to provide the best we can for students and the teachers, and, and we've shown we've done that with the stuff, supplement, and actually went above more than the, uh, request than a couple of years ago for the supplement. So I think we're paying the price for that now, but it is the hard part, and we're, we're trying to do the best we can and divide the pie up or try to keep most people happy. But it's, you know, I guess, what is it, a, a three-million increase? Is that a thirty percent or less? Or is that a ten percent, uh, on the schools' increase?
Probably about eleven, twelve percent.
Eleven, twelve percent, you know, and a lot of other, you know, those, those buses burn the same diesel fuel we do and then gas vehicles with gasoline, and you had to pay people more money to get them to show up and work now. So it's a, it's a sign of, uh, Bidenomics, I guess, but we're, we're all paying the price, and we're gonna do the best we can. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner Quinn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to echo my fellow Commissioners thanking all the presenters here tonight, coming out and putting together, uh, the budget, Mr. Burns, and Miss Michal, of course, all the hard work that goes into that, the real sausage-making of governance, as it were. You might not want to see how it's done, but, you know, you do enjoy the province. So I'd like to thank my fellow Commissioners also. This is where, uh, you know, we gotta roll up our sleeves and then go to work. And, uh, it, it does take quite a bit of effort. Uh, we got a great supportive staff, and we got, uh, a lot of other folks out there that make the job as easy as possible. So thank you all very much, and that's all I can say. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. And I, I just, I want to reiterate, thank you to Dee and your staff and all the great things you all do, um, to keep us straight and to keep us updated. I love the transparency in the county. When we need something from the Finance Office, we get it. I mean, there's no doubt about that. We pretty much call Dee or you get those answers, and, and that, that means a lot. And I want to reiterate what I said to Dr. Mancini, the, the, the col, the, 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 the Carter County school system is amazing. And now they're, they're joined together and working together on, on these kids that are getting the opportunity to, to, uh, duel and roll and all those good things. I came in here tonight, I was, I was, I was a little fired up. And I, I'm, I, I was actually talking to Julie and asking her some questions when she, she arrived early. For some reason, she probably doesn't need to do that in the future. But, uh, I was.
Rookie.
A couple of questions to her. But that was one of the best presentations I've seen in a long time, and you did a great job with it. Said thank you, because since our March presentation, we asked you some questions, you answered all those, and we greatly appreciate that, and I could tell you're on the ball. And you gotta be on the ball. With your bu, with the size of your budget, you've gotta be on the ball. And I'm not saying you've never not been on the ball, but it's, it, you know, I, I was, I wasn't joking, but, I mean, the school budget is about a hundred and sixty-five million dollars a year, the tot, the total budget. And, and, and over the course of thirteen, I've said this a couple of years ago, and maybe it sounds crazy, but over the course of thirteen years of a kid going into school, and however many there is in the ADM, eighty-two-hundred or whatever, it's, it's well over a billion dollars over that thirteen-year period for those eighty-two-hundred kids to go to school. And that's just a hard number to think about. But when I say that, this county, thank God for our forefathers or the people before us that called them the crusty old Commissioners, because that's what I was saying I was, because I was questioning some things. And I hate to use that term, but, you know.
Use it for yourself.
This county, this county should be very proud of how smart it's been with its money, and it ain't got nothing to do with us. It's, 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 it's happened year after year after year. We kept the tax dollars down, and we kept the tax rate down, and, and we get blamed, oh, you don't need to, you know, you don't need. But, but it's the best thing we've ever done, and you, we should all be proud. Again, it has nothing to do with us. It's, over the years, thank God, we've tried to stay as tight as we possibly can. We've got a top-ten school district, or school system, that is nowhere near the budgets of the ones that are above them. And a lot of those might even be charter schools or whatever they are, what, whoever, who, who cares? We're, we know we're good, and we're tight with our money. And thank God for all the, thank God for all the, the people who own properties here that don't live here, that don't have their kids in school, the absentee homeowners that don't vote, that don't do any of those things. But when you crack it all out, it all boils down to, our values in this county are high. Our, our property values are high. That's all hopefully gonna change soon with our revaluations and all the things we've done. But I just want to say that I agree, I, I was born here, several other people on here were born here. This county has changed, and it's changed for all the right reasons. And we've got a hell of a school system, and we've got a wonderful college that is just doing things. It's amazing. And, um, and I'm really proud of that. But at the same time, I'm not gonna raise taxes this year. I'll tell you that right off the bat. I'm not raising taxes. We're gonna really have to pull up our sleeves and figure out what we're gonna do. But I can't raise taxes this year, and I won't do it. But at the same time, I understand that things cost more. We gave the raise for the supplements. We, one of the, one of the things that is so unique about the school system is, is the administrators tell us how much it costs to run it, the teachers that you run into out at night or, or whatever. And you ask them, and I asked them several years ago, I said, what is the one thing that you, we could really help you out as Commissioners? And they said the supplement. And we did that. And, and I wish I could give more, because they deserve it. They're the ones that are doing it every day. But at the same time, we've got it, we've got to tight, we've got to tighten up as much as we possibly can to make all this work. And, um, and I, I look forward to all of us working together and doing what we're, what we're gonna do. But, you know, I almost broke out in tears tonight because what is happening in the school system with, with Parker boats and all the things you talked about, you know, and all that is what we've all been begging for is, is, is to keep our kids here. And, and now our kids are getting a two-year degree at our college while they're going to high school. That's happening, you know, that, it's just amazing. And it's all happening right here in Carter County. And I forty-two is gonna bust in. Are we prepared for it? No. But, you know, we, we're, we're the best. Carter County's the best. Just ask Tommy. He went out of town this weekend, but I can't tell you the rest of the story. But this is the best place to live. It's, it's, it's an awesome place. So again, thank you to everybody to put this budget together, and thank you for all the time you guys have spent putting your budgets together. But, um, I look forward to seeing where we end up at the end of the month, because it's my last budget, so, and yours too. And yours too, Kavanaugh.
Yeah, buddy.
But have a good night. Thank you. Um, and, uh, I guess we need to, uh, to adjourn.
Okay, second.
Before I talk too much. All right, we're done. Thank you.